Hey, good evening, and we are going to begin the study session December one, two thousand and twenty five on the city's water system.
I'm gonna actually introduce the three here because they often forget to say who they are. So. And tonight, we're gonna talk about our city's water system and. We had the opportunity to do one of our Ellensburg Academy events this last year, talking about the water system. It was very well received. Lots of really great information and a critical service that we provide to the community. So tonight you have. Ryan Liski, our Public Works Director. You also have Mike Helgason, our Assistant Public Works Director. And Rebecca Springer, our Water Resources Manager, that will share the stage and they have lots of great information and a little bit of show and tell. So take it away, Ryan.
Thank you, Heidi. Um, yeah, so this is similar to the presentation that we provided this last fall, summer for the Ellensburg Academy, but we've modified it a bit. And that was kind of the starting point. This is gonna be a little bit interactive. We're gonna tag team this a little bit. And so if you have questions as we go through, by all means. Jump in as we go through. Anyway, so as. There we go. Okay, so first slide, I'm gonna jump in. Rebecca's gonna take over here for a few slides to talk about our water system, water quality and testing and that sorts of thing.
Good evening. So we are very lucky. The United States has one of the safest drinking water supplies in the world. Many places do not have reliable access to clean drinking water. And a part of what we mentioned at the Ellensburg Academy, a part of staying healthy is knowing where your water comes from. The city's water supply comes from ground beneath us. It's treated, requires minimal treatment, and then travels through a network of pipes to everyone's tap. The Water Department supports our community's health by collecting and distributing this clean water to homes. As a part of this, we perform rigorous testing through the Department of Health, and we have an excellent history of compliance thanks to an incredible team. So some of the drinking water safety measures that you may or may not have heard about. We work hard to ensure that we have the right infrastructure in place to provide for the needs of the community, which requires a lot of careful planning. So that involves our water system plan, most recently updated in two thousand and twenty four. And that's effectively a roadmap for maintaining a safe, sustainable water supply for a growing population. That plan is updated every ten years, and it identifies water sources, protections, infrastructure needs, and budgetary plans for providing this water service. The city, along with other water suppliers, must test their water system to ensure that it meets all of the quality, water quality standards established by the Department of Health. We also require testing and disinfection with every new connection or repair that takes place within the distribution system. Also, annually, we send out consumer confidence reports. You may recognize those from the water bills, but that speaks to. What has been reported, what has been noted in the water quality analytical results. And again, we have an excellent history of compliance with Safe Drinking Water Act and DOH regulations. Yes.
So the previous slide, I don't know if this is the right time to ask those questions or to put something on record, but in terms of source protection. I'm aware that mostly KVFR, but the fire departments hook up to the hydrants and they don't use backflow valves. And water sits in the rural tenders upwards of months, and sometimes the source of that water is a static water supply like a pond. So I'm just, I'm wondering from a source protection, if we put that on the agenda for the next, I know you guys are negotiating a new contract with the fire department. That backflow valves are normally put on trucks like that, and they're not on those trucks.
Good to know. And infrastructure wise, I might hear that question a little towards my.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Some of the drinking water compliance testing that we perform, so most of these are driven by EPA's Unregulated Contaminant Monitoring Rule. If you want something really fun to say, you can just use UCMR as the acronym. So this program collects data on contaminants that are suspected that may be present in the nation's drinking water. So these are, these are not regulated at this point by the Safe Drinking Water Act, so these UCMR components. But the UCMR program helps to take suspect contaminants, emerging contaminants, like you may have heard of PFOS most recently. Which helps establish and update health-based standards to be set under the Safe Drinking Water Act. So some of these UCMR programs that have then translated into periodic monitoring programs. A good example is the Lead Copper Rule Revision two thousand and twenty four. Which has an effect, you may have seen the notices go out for unknown material connections throughout the community. So the UCMR program is, think of that as the driver behind this water compliance testing. We also perform monthly compliance testing. So because we treat with chlorine, disinfect with chlorine. And add fluoride to our water supplies. Now, these are done at the source of each well. It's important that we demonstrate that we're within a compliant range of treatment and residual in the system. So we do perform monthly testing to demonstrate that. Annually, we test for nitrate, and then periodically, these are cyclical, and they're determined in our water quality monitoring schedule by DOH. So we test for other items like gross alpha, radium, inorganics, volatile organics, herbicides, and soil fumigants. Again, very good history of compliance. Some of these are on the order of six to nine years. Some are every three years. It just depends on DOH's requirements at that time. So if you think of Ellensburg's water supply system, if anyone is familiar with a private well, a home on a private well. You have a gravel screen and a submersible pump pulls groundwater in through that screen and delivers it to a pressure tank, which helps to regulate the pressure. That flows throughout the pipes in your home. That's done through a well casing. There's an electrical component that runs the pump. So if you think of that simple version of the system and you upscale it to the community level, you have source water wells. Ellensburg is supplied by eleven different wells, which we use as our source water. And those are pulled up through a gravel screen and a larger pump. They go to the wellhouses. And at each of those individual wellhouses, now that is where we have chlorine disinfection and addition of fluoride. They then go to storage, which Michael discussed a little bit later in our upper and lower pressure zones for the water reservoirs. And from those storage areas, they go out into the distribution system into the home.
Real quick.
Yes.
On. Sorry. Regarding those eleven wells, how often are all of them running or what's the kind of the lead lag between those wells? Do we know it depends on season?
That's a great question, and I'm gonna punt that one to Mike, too, because it's dependent on a number of factors. I'll let him take over with that one.
Good question, Delano. Never are they always running, all running?
Great.
Often are seven running in the summertime. It's not uncommon for us to show up in the wintertime and have none running. So it's really just driven by downstream demand. We have good redundancy right now, as long as they're all operational, which we all know that's not always the case. So. I don't wanna get off track too far here, but we can have a well down for six months if a motor goes bad. It used to be a month, now it's six. So those are things we have to think about.
And which is good because sometimes those parts.
Yep, that's the problem, the parts, the parts and the turnaround time on even service anymore. The crane company that pulls our wells that we use most often, it used to be two weeks out. Now they're four months out on occasion. And it's hard to find other people to do the work, so.
I had a related question if you're.
No, I'm good.
On the, so our storage systems, we've got the water tower on top of the hill, and we've got the one at the airport. Do we have any others?
Not currently.
Okay, so of the eleven wells, are they all, are they zoned? In other words, the ones closer to the airport go to that, and the ones closer.
There's only one well that, well, excuse me, there's one that we own ourselves, and then the one CW owns that pump into the upper zone. The rest all pump into the lower zone.
And is there a transfer capability between?
Then we have a way to pump that water uphill if we need to. But that, I'm kinda gonna get, I'll answer that question better here, so.
Yeah, what triggered my question was the demand drives the, how frequent the pumps work, but I was assuming that what would really drive the pump action is the volume in the storage tanks, which is.
Correct. So the demand, volume in the storage tank, that's exactly how it works, actually.
Thank you.
Can I back up a?
Yep.
I think when people think of contaminants in their water, they think of E. coli and the bacteria stuff. Is it, do we test for that or just assumed that the chlorine is taking care of it?
We take twenty samples a month. For what's called a bacteriological test, which would pick up E. coli or other gerardia, other contaminants that could be present. We take them at twenty, or five different sample sites, four times a month throughout the system. That number will probably go up in the near future based on our population, but right now we're at one. So.
So your testing is throughout the system, not the well head, right?
We do, we do all the, maybe both of what Rebecca explained to you is well source testing. What Nancy was asking is system, where we actually go to.
To distribution.
Different addresses within the city. We can pull from a bunch of different ones. So we have access to. Okay.
Awesome.
So we kept these slides in from the Ellensburg Academy. Just, just, we thought it'd be interesting. This is our newest groundwater well, Illinois well. I'm not gonna go through every bullet point on here. But this is basically what a groundwater well for the city of Ellensburg looks like. The depth obviously varies, but this well was drilled in two thousand and nineteen. They started with a ten-inch pilot hole and then ended up cutting that twenty inches wide down to four hundred feet, and then it's twelve inches, another six hundred feet below that. So that's, that well casing or well is drilled one thousand feet below the surface. So then they did some test pumping on that well and were able to get three thousand gallons per minute out of it, which is quite, quite a lot. So. Then outfitting began. This was held off, or this was pushed back a long time because of procurement issues. But after about twenty months, we were able to actually start pumping the well. I think it was the end of two thousand and twenty three. And we were, and we have, since then, we have been able to pump twenty-five hundred gallons per minute. Nonstop if we want to. It's just been an excellently great producing well. And it does pump into the upper zone. David was asking earlier about how we get water to the upper reservoir. This well is connected to actually the upper and the lower zone, but mainly we pump it into the upper zone. It has a pressure reducing valve where we can let it pump directly into the lower zone if there's a fire flow event or something crazy happens and they need water quick. But it's pumping water into the upper zone, which means we don't have to booster pump water to the upper zone. So we're only pumping it once, we're not pumping it twice. And then we have a transfer station that allows that water to come into the lower zone by gravity, which doesn't take energy, which is a huge boon for our system. This is what the, some of you have seen this. I think some of you have got, have been here for your tour. But this is what the outside of Illinois Wells Pump House looks like. And this is when they were doing the outfitting. You can see him dropping the twelve-inch casing in, and there's two, those two conduits that he's gonna feed down, and he just keeps adding to them as they go down. Those are sounding tubes to be able to check the water level in the well. The control room, there's a lot of, there's a lot of money you're looking at right there. These are variable frequency drives. That allow us to run the well at a volume set point instead of just at a, hey, turn it on and it pumps and whatever water comes out, comes out. This decides how much water you wanna pump, and it controls the speed of the pump to keep it there. So it's more energy efficient. This is the inside of the pump room itself. You can barely see it back in the back, but that's our five hundred horsepower motor that pumps this water. Any questions about Illinois well? Okay. This slide's basically just giving you an idea, and you guys know this already, but this is the two thousand and twenty-five and two thousand and twenty-six budget and the budgeted revenue for each. This, it costs a lot of money to run the system, but we're, we're, we've adjusted rates and we're kinda catching up to where we need to be. We've actually budgeted more than we planned to get in a revenue because we have some surplus to work with. This is the overview of the water system. I know you can't read this, but basically all I'm trying to show you here is that the purple and the green are two pressure zones. We actually have three now, but. When this was printed, there was only two. The purple is the upper zone. We call it the high-pressure zone. It's the one fed off the airport reservoir, and then the green is the low-pressure zone that's fed off of the Craig's Hill reservoir. And they're completely isolated from each other, other than a couple PRVs that allow water to go from upper to lower if we need it to. Pressure-reducing valves, sorry. Or pressure-relief valves, that's where you wanna configure them. We just wanted to give you a snapshot of what our HMI looks like, which is a human-machine interface. So basically, this is how we can remotely operate the system. I can do this from my office every morning. It's password-protected, all that good stuff. It's on our own server. But as you can see, I think Ryan took this snapshot this morning or this afternoon.
Yeah, I did it this morning. When I first got to work, the answer to your well question was there was zero wells running, but when I actually took the snapshot, it looks like we had three running.
And it's kinda neat that he took it when he did, because we actually wanna keep all of our pumps and motors and everything operating. So even though we have Illinois well and we can dump all that water down through the transfer station, we actually, every, once every couple of weeks, we decide to run the booster pumps just to make sure. That they're in good condition and keep them running and lubed and all of that. So this, this little green wheel you see. The bigger one is actually a booster pump pumping water from Craig's Hill reservoir up to Airport Reservoir. And we make sure that happens at least once every couple of weeks, just so we know everything's in good condition. On left of the reservoir picture, which is these, those two depictions that look like. One says Craig's Hill reservoir, one says Airport Reservoir. Those are the actual amount of water that's in the reservoir when we took this snapshot. So you can see we have fifty-two feet in Craig's Hill and we have eighty-nine in Airport. And then right next to the Craig's Hill reservoir is our, our new Craig's Hill booster pump station, and it is running just a single pump at nine gallons per minute. That system's so tight up there that that gets down to five, six gallons per minute right now, which is really cool, and keeps them all in decent water pressure.
How many pumps did we have up there prior to that?
Zero.
We didn't have one.
So basically, everything was fed hydraulically, so the person that lives right at the bottom of the tower. Got their pressure from how much water was in the tower, and that's a problem, because we could never use all that volume of water without, without draining her pressure. So this boosters pump allows us to now use all fifty-two feet if we ever need to.
We ended up with structural problems up on Craig's Hill, low pressure.
Yeah, yeah, low pressure is always, we were always teetering on that line of, you know, what was sufficient pressure for those, those customers up there.
Good question. So you can manage the system remotely, right? Does that, is the, I was curious back earlier in the additives, the chlorine and the fluoride, is that automated or is that a manual process?
It's automated.
Is that also controllable from your desktop or is that in the house, so to speak?
So we sample every, every time we show up to a well and it's running, we sample for bowl. That's our policy. So we just do that because we just think it's the best practice. The chlorines inject, it's all done automatically, but there's a human component. So we have to make sure, yeah, it's basically a piston pump. That feeds the fluoride and it's a, it's a gas venturi that sucks the chlorine in. It is got gaseous chlorine, so he has to make sure that those chlorine bottles are always full or make it through the weekend or whatever. And then the fluoride, he has to keep adding fluoride into a tank where it's, it, it turns soluble. And he has to keep that at a certain level, otherwise the rate on the fluoride pump's not gonna matter. If it's, if it's too weak, a chlorine, it could pump all day and not, or fluoride, it wouldn't get enough fluoride in this, so.
And my other quick question was just roughly, remind me of the capacity of the two reservoirs?
Four million gallons for Craig Hill and one million for Airport.
One?
Yep. Yep.
Thank you.
Was this the last one you wanted? Oh, well, we just took some pretty pictures of our reservoirs. Here we go. Yeah, there you go.
Four and one, I got.
Four million and one million.
I could've saved it for that. That would've been visual.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, one more. This is, I think you guys have seen this, if you've been on UAC ever before, but this, this is our thirteen-month pumping report. We just kinda wanted to give you an idea, some of you haven't seen it, what our volume of water that we produce every month looks like. As you can see, from May to September, it's a lot. We pumped two hundred and forty-two million gallons in July. But in February and January, it's under a hundred, and last November it was sixty-seven. A lot of it's temperature-driven. People don't use water when it's cold out very often. A lot of it's irrigation-driven. But October of this year, we pumped twenty million less gallons in October of last year. I don't think that means anything. I just, it's just good, you know, over ten years, that might sort of mean something, but. That's just kind of a representation of how we produce water at the city of Ellensburg. I'm gonna give it back to Ryan.
Thank you. So I'll jump back in. Yeah, I think some of what we're a little bit hopeful for is the October having a lower amount of water pumped as compared to last year. We're hope through our leak detection process that we do every year. We're hoping that we found some leaks that have actually reduced the amount of water we pump, but we'll touch on that a little bit later.
I was gonna ask, Ryan, do you think we saw any results from our attempt at conservation late in the year?
Well, that would be an example right there. It was twenty million.
Maybe just last time.
Last year. That would be the only measurable thing we, we would be able to.
What's the lost percentage that you're allowed before you have to?
It's ten percent, I believe. It's a rolling three-year.
Out of this, out of the total.
Well below that right now. Barely below it?
Barely below that, so that's our.
Okay, so high-end users need to track it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's one of those things. We, we could check our wells every day. We know how many gallons we've pumped, but then our billing system is sometimes a little bit hard to correlate with because it's billing people on a per day in the month and what day the meter get read. So we know daily how much we've pumped, but sometimes a little bit of estimation on, towards the other end of how much we've actually sold. But then how much distribution system leakage is there? Needs to be less than ten percent, and that's some of the stuff we really target with the water leak detection. And we think we've actually found a couple significant leaks this last year that should reduce that. Do you have a question, Nancy?
You might get to it, so I'll wait.
Okay, so here's kinda your water system in a spreadsheet. We've got different types of water pipe out there. The CI along the top, that's cast iron. That's went in the forties, fifties, sixties, ductile iron. That's our current standard right now, ductile iron pipe. Steel, HDPE is high-density, high-density polyethylene. PVC, which, I looked at this this morning. We need to go see where this four hundred and five foot of sixteen-inch PVC is at. AC is asbestos cement. And then the concrete is actually, it's a concrete cylinder pipe. It's a pretty, it's pipe from like the forties, but it's, it's a steel pipe with cylindrical rebar wrapped around it, and it's cement coated. And it's our transmission main, and we have about a little over six miles of it to go out of town, and that's what those all stand for. And so if you kinda look at the totals predominantly, we've got that thirty-seven thousand feet of the concrete cylinder pipe, but then ductile iron was most of our system, and that's what we prefer. That's, that's our current standard, and it's really, really good stuff. We've had some water main breaks this year. I just want you to target on the, kinda the column to the left. We've tried to keep good track of these since I'm aware of, since back to about two thousand and eight on how many breaks per year. Up to twenty-five, we've had about twenty-one. I wanna kinda highlight that a little bit. Those are ones that we know are system failures. Our leak detection company that's come in and located them and found them, or these are ones that have come to the ground and we've known we've had a problem. We show seven here, but those were contractor-induced ones that happened on one of our projects, and so excavations near water main and collapses, things like that.
I was gonna ask of the other ones that are not contractor-related that were kind of the natural failure, do you know what type of piping system was in that?
Yes.
You're about to get to it, sorry.
We're getting there. No, you're good. That's a great question. I can, we kind of have a few slides on these things, and Mike can help ad lib a little bit and has a little bit of show and tell. So of our breaks, the main factors contributing to this, like I said, we, I don't know, ten years ago, we used to leak detect. Like somebody comes in and listens to water valves and goes around with different equipment, listening to try to hear if they hear leaks. We used to do a quarter of the system a year, and we've, then we did a half. Now we are able to, I think we spend less money than we did ten years ago. We're doing the entire system. So that's one. And then two, the equipment that they use is way better, and the technician that we've been able to have on site the last several years is really good at what they do. And so they actually have found a lot of leaks. And so.
Clarifying, you're saying that we're finding more leaks because we're looking for more leaks?
That's what I am saying, yes. That's my belief.
But these big breaks that. That we have to close the, shut down the system for, that's different, right? That's part of that.
Yeah.
We found, I think. I think we found like six that wouldn't did surface. We found six main breaks that were fairly large that were going down instead of coming up.
Through the leak detection system, and the others we found because water bubbled up and people, okay. Okay.
So here, I think we have a couple of pictures over there, like cast iron is our, man, I have another slide that'll talk about this, but do you wanna show that? I'll show later. The picture you see on the left, the taller pipe is cast iron pipe, and this was a popular pipe in the forties, fifties, and sixties. It's great pipe. But it can break in different ways, and if you look at the pipe to the left, there's like a spiral, we call it, crack, and depends on when, when they break. If this happens, then you can lose a lot of water. Like you could have an entire piece of pipe split, and that's when you see the big chunks of road blown out of the road, things like that. That's what can happen there. And just that piece of pipe on the right is a piece of ductile iron pipe. Which is our current standard.
So Ryan, when you have a break in your cast iron pipe, do you pair it with cast iron pipe?
No, we cut it out and put in a section of ductile iron pipe. Or depending on the brake, that's a spiral brake, and it can go down the length of the pipe. If it's a ring brake, like the pipe, we didn't bring their kind of big loppers, when they actually snap, like the one, if we go in and cut out a section of pipe, we've got kind of a chain deal that goes around them. And it pops, and it.
It's an actual brake.
Yeah.
Very rare.
And so when that happens, we're able to put, we call them a Band-Aid around it. I don't know if that's the real technical term, but we call them a Band-Aid, which is basically a rubber coupler with stainless steel sleeve that goes around it and. Bolts together and compresses around the brake, and it fixes the problem. There's a lot of those in the city.
Does iron rust out?
You know, this pipe, our, we are pretty fortunate where we live. Our soils are pretty inert. Like we don't really have a lot of rust problems. Or problems with water, like when we cut into a pipe, I mean, we've got a few coupons over there. The pipe looks like the day, Mike used to work in the water department. He's done a lot of this. The pipe looks like the day it went in. A lot of other water utilities, they get gel inside their pipe, different things, just because of what's their soils made of and the stuff that's in their water. Different type of, what am I trying to say, magnesiums and things. So we don't have that issue. Our pipe's actually in pretty good shape, and, you know, a lot of other soils in other places, they wrap their pipe in plastic. Like you can buy it sleeved to help keep it protected from the acidic or environment that the soil is, but ours are not like that.
You're getting a half-yellow, red flag. You have to go to the microphone when you talk. I was isolating you from the criticism, but. I was isolating you from the criticism, but.
Well, like a spiral crack, I can get you no matter what.
Uh, so like this, this is kind of some statistical stuff on our brakes. You look at the six inch CI, that's six inch cast iron is fifty-six percent of our brakes. And so. Most of the time when you hear of the water main break, that's what it is. And so six inch and eight inch cast iron. Are where most of them are at. And then like I said, I keep talking about the forties, fifties and sixties. That's the fifties are mostly what we find in our brakes. And I was just going to kind of try to push a little bit more like, uh, pipe back then was, it's not bedded. So when our crews dig it up. There's just dirt and whatever happened to be around is backfilled around the pipe and there's really no protection. I'll show you a slide in a minute of what we do now, but. Um, we think that helps, you know, it's not a uniform bearing around the pipe and pipes shift and things move and. You know, water flexes and pushes and pulls and, and so we think that definitely has something to do with it. And like the last statement there, and I wanted to make sure I've told Mike, I said, if I'm saying anything, it's not true, tell me. But almost every one of these breaks, when we dig them up, I'm told. If it's a ring break, there's a rock or something rigid right next to the pipe and it's just finally given up. And we dig it up and we put a Band-Aid over it. Spiral breaks, we think the pipe's likely. Uh, been settled somewhere and it's just induced like some bending stress in the pipe. And then eventually gives up and that gives up the spiral break. And then that's when we'll cut a section of pipe out and drop a ductile iron in there. That's just our current detail. Uh, I just want to point out that's the pipe at the bottom, but if you'll notice around it, we require pea gravel bedding. It's times that we've had issues, you know, a little bit of pushback from contractors in the past. I haven't heard about it in a long time, but all of our new pipe. Since I've been here twenty-nine years has gone in and it's been, plus that. Is bedded in pea gravel bedding, which consolidates around the pipe. It's nice and uniform and. There's like a uniform bearing around the pipe. And so it hopefully prevents a lot of those issues we're talking about. And there shouldn't be rocks against it. Uh, I've hammered on that a bunch. Um, some more statistics. As you can see there, like the nineteen fifties, forty-three percent of the breaks that we're experiencing. And then nineteen fifties in breaks per mile. Did some study before I should have went and found it. I, what the average number of breaks happen in municipalities per year. We're actually quite a bit below what a normal municipality experiences in numbers of breaks per mile per year. Uh, but you can see that nineteen fifties pipe is the, that thirteen, uh, breaks per mile. So, and most of those usually happen are either in the winter or kind of the shoulder, late fall, early spring months. Which is really unfortunate in winter because water freezes. This, I just have a few pictures here that are kind of cool. I think we have, like, we've talked about this six mile-ish, uh, transmission main that comes into town. That comes from three wells. There were six valves on this, uh, two weeks ago. We replaced the fifth out of six of these and it's actually, it's pretty stressful work. It's very involved and once we're in, it's, there's no turning back. And so if you look on the left, that's a picture of what the existing twenty-four inch valve, it's a big pipe. Uh, looked like, oh, we cut that valve out, like we have to isolate and shut the main down. We did these. We've done this two or three times now, on the other four, which were closer to town, which we had significant outages of people and it was. Into the wee hours of the night before we were able to get water pressure restored. This was a smaller section of, I think we had about sixty people out of water. Like I said, this was two weeks ago. Um, still took a long time and it took a long time for the pipe to drink. Cause there's a lot of water in a twenty-four inch pipe and I forget how. What length the pipe is. It takes a really long time for all that water to come out so that we can actually start working. But they cut it out with saws.
Ryan, can you tell them the year that pipe was?
Oh, I think it was nineteen forty-seven, I believe. So it's been in there a while, but the pipe itself looks good. And like I said, it's. It's a steel pipe. There's a cement lining on the inside. And then there's like rebar intention wrapped around it. And then the outside's coated with cement, so.
Ryan, I had a question on the vintage of the pipe. Um, so the sort of the, I don't know. What you, what we call it exactly, the, it's not historic downtown, but the, the grid system basically from. University down to say Capitol and, you know, Maine to Chestnut or whatever, um, and even east of that, um. Were most, I'm looking at the dates of your pipes. Were most of the mains installed in the thirties and forties? And I guess my question would be houses, so are some older houses, were they on wells before we had city water? I mean, I'm just.
Actually don't know the, I don't know the answer to that, but.
I know a lot of houses that are, that are built even in the thirties. You don't have a lot of pipe there. So I was assuming maybe in the. Early days, people just had to have a well.
That's possible. Yeah, I'm not sure, but yeah, it's possible.
Great. Okay, no, I just, not a big deal. I just was curious. Thanks.
You're just taking a look at duration.
Yeah.
That's on me, sorry.
Well, this is obviously always, uh, makes me, makes us all happy. That's the new valves going in. And it was actually. I forget what time this was. This was getting into be more in the later hours of the evening, eight, nine, ten o'clock, but sure, nice to drop that in. And have all those bolt holes line up and have all the bolts fit in the right spot. And so. Once that starts going together, things start happening fairly quickly. Uh, that's just those two pictures you see there. And so it's done. There's one valve left to be replaced and we'll probably. Do that hopefully next spring, maybe March.
With that last picture, that would that, would we consider that to be a more elaborate Band-Aid? There's no welding involved, right? You're cutting and bolting and.
It's all, yeah, it's all mechanical. It's, there's seals, these are.
Seals, gaskets.
We bought these valves. There's a, there's the valve and then there's a, what do you call that? It's dismantling joint that.
Yeah.
You can put in and then put all the bolts in and it slides and it's.
It'll hold forever. It'll have to move us all.
Yep. That is the hope and they work. Um, so just from this, uh. We started this year, we put three hundred thousand dollars in the budget for twenty-five and then twenty-six. We want to start targeting, replacing. Uh, some of these cast iron mains, because that's where you see their predominant number of breaks are. Um, so as we go into twenty-six, I mean, we've done several repairs this year and haven't done like a water main replacement project like. This year. So as we go into next year, we have a, about a four hundred thousand dollar project we're hoping to do. Over here on Walnut Street, uh, which is, we're going to go from Fifth Avenue to University Way. And we've had four recorded breaks, like what's kind of nice. We have some statistics on this. And so. Uh, it's about a six hundred foot stretch and we're hoping to build that next spring or summer. So, and then as you get your twenty-seven to twenty-eight budgets, why, I, we're going to again put money in there so we can just start tackling these things and. As we move into the future. Um, so a little bit on our water management strategy, um. We intend to drill, I mean, some, it's in the budget. I want to drill another well in the next. Couple of years, uh, mainly for reliability and redundancy. It's just, I think, important for the city and something we need to do. Um, we will start a well sighting study on, in the, on that in January. And we'll hopefully get that located and bring some information to you guys over the coming months of the next year. So we can move ahead with that. Uh, aquifer measurements, we take aquifer measurements every March. We've been doing that for a number of years now and we provide a report, used to be to the utility advisory committee. We'll bring that to the environmental commission now. Just to give everybody an idea on what the water elevations look like in our groundwater wells. And it's always kind of interesting. I mean, it bounces around a little and some actually come up. But so you guys, so be looking for that in about April or so, April or May. We'll put that in a report to the environmental commission. I know Nancy is on there as well and has seen them in utility advisory committee meetings. Um, and so kind of with that, like, you know, we'll continue to bring forward a. Robust later maintenance and capital projects, um, in the water system and the upcoming annual biennial budget. Is to continue bolstering the redundancy and reliability of our system. Um, we'll touch on these few things.
Hey, so climate considerations and conservation. So twenty twenty-five marked the Yakima Basin's third consecutive year of drought. Um, as y'all are well aware, um, we've had some interesting communications with ecology during twenty twenty-five. So these natural flows in the river were unable to sustain the most senior eighteen fifty-five irrigation rights down south. Which resulted in a surface water curtailment. Um, those orders were issued by ecology on October sixth. And those orders remained in effect through the end of the irrigation season, October thirty-first. Um, the city's current source of groundwater, as we discussed, or the current source of water is from groundwater, which we discussed earlier. Um, and those groundwater sources were not curtailed as a part of the curtailment. Um, hydrologically, however, groundwater use affects surface water availability and vice versa. So we immediately implemented conservation measures and requested participation in conservation measures from the community. So the curtailment did end, but that's because the irrigation diversion period is over. That doesn't mean we're not still in a drought. So this drought is anticipated to continue. We have hopes that we'll replenish some aquifer levels. Um, and surface water levels during the non-summer months, but it's very important that we look at this as a long-term strategy. Uh, so the city and city staff actively participate in the Yakima Basin Integrated Plan. Through their groundwater storage subcommittee and also through their municipal subgroup. Um, the city is continuing work, um, on the aquifer storage and recovery project. So that's understanding. Potential feasibility of using ASR techniques to bolster groundwater storage. So as we see some of those higher highs and lower lows and a little bit more volatility in, um. Precipitation instead of a nice, uh, snowpack storage. It's important to understand how we can mitigate those fluctuations. And perhaps contribute to, um, a, a better overall surface flow. Um, and groundwater reservoir level. Um, so we have a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in ecology grant funding that will support this effort in twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven. Um, so that includes thirty thousand that was left over from the subs, from the previous ASR study. Which will be rolled into finishing that up and hopefully preparing for a, a pilot study. Um, twenty twenty-six planned efforts, uh, include continued leak detection. So that's a, it's a very effective program. It's helping us to identify areas where we can stop that, um, that leak. And then we have our water use efficiency goals. Um, additionally, we're looking toward. Upping public outreach and education to help understand where our water goes and just how much is consumed by. Perhaps a, a lawn with, you know, when you consider a, a traditional turf lawn with maybe some more drought tolerant plants. Um, so in that spirit, we're also considering a water conservation demonstration garden. To give an idea of different potential surface covers that might be. Um, more friendly to a, a drought. Um, a, a warm, dry climate and also not require so much watering. And probably require much less maintenance by way of mowing. So these are some of our planned efforts for twenty twenty-six. Any questions?
Let's just get it, uh, on the last item, the conservation demonstration garden. Um, you may have already seen this one, but I saw one. That was built in Wenatchee, uh, above sort of downtown and sort of right next to the railroad area. And it was a. I think it was a demonstration project and they enlisted the help of WSU's. Extension office. And it was, it had turned into, I mean, it was very effective in demonstrating the, the, the. The, the drought tolerant plants, but it also became, uh, a. Section of their walking path and there was a lot of community use of it. So, I mean. There are some good examples, I guess was my main thought.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you for the awesome information. Appreciate everyone's efforts within water and. Quite frankly, all of our utilities protecting and, um, being proactive with, uh, trying to address all these issues. I did want to have one question. Uh, I should have asked this when the slide was up. Uh, when we talked about all the different decades of. Piping and associating the total amount of breaks and linear feed and everything like that. For our nineteen fifties piping, do we have any idea, just a ROM on how much out there still needs to be addressed roughly?
I can go back to slide unless Mike's got it off the top of his head.
We have done, we have done that research, assuming that our.
Sorry, Mike.
Assuming that our AutoCAD and, uh, mapping or information's correct, we, we do know how much is out there.
Okay.
So just by assumption of nineteen fifties pipe. Most of that I would, I would guess, I'm not positive, would be cast iron, but it's about twenty-five thousand feet. So if we do four hundred feet a year. It'll be a while, but at least it'll be a.
And the only reason why I ask that is simply just trying to understand from. A projected standpoint, how much more we have to deal with. Because we know obviously the nineteen fifties pipe is an issue. We're going to have to replace it. So. Just want to kind of project out how much in our whole city system are we looking at over the next decade?
Got it.
So your total in this inventory, your total is just shy of six hundred thousand, six hundred thousand feet and you've got. Less than two hundred and fifty in cast iron. So all the new pipe is going in is ductile or whatever else. So. Our percentage, we're adding more, probably more lines, but we're also making replacements. So it'll be. The number will get smaller, not larger. And so our, but it. It seems like a, a pro, a challenge that isn't going to be solved in the next five, ten or twenty years.
Awesome. Great information.
Better placed than planned. We're good.
A lot of it at places.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, we're going to break till nineteen hundred.